Hey, very good. It is a little bit after 3:00. I'd like to call this workshop meeting together tonight or today. We actually are hosting it a little bit an hour earlier than normal. We had three things on the agenda before we wanted to move forward with discussing some details of the budget. I've invited Mike Gibson from the Columbia Bank to come in today to talk and answer any questions the town board may have in regards to this working progress of the Elton Guarantee Program that we're trying to put together. And in concept, we talked about, or I've talked about, has been the town of Elton when we designate certain properties that we would like to see developed in some manner, that we would try to encourage residents of our town or residents of the county that want to put a business into the town and help them in any manner that we can to get that going. There's risk involved in these programs, but we have to weigh out whether the risk of doing this or not doing something, which weighs out the best. And I'm going to add this because it'll kind of go into the budget side of things in a little bit, but the town, our revenue is based on assessments. And if the assessments of the town go up, of course, it always makes it easier to fund services, public safety and public works throughout our town. When the assessments go in the negative way, that's when everyone, he always gets a little nervous and there's discussions about increasing the tax rate, and those are things that we never want to do. And we're creating more fees, more different types of taxes. And the worst thing that can happen to our municipality is that when the assessments go down. And what will make an assessment go down quicker than anything is vacant buildings. Vacant buildings bring down the assessments quicker than anything you could ever imagine. Also along with that, you'll see if you have vacant buildings and you have buildings with plywood or boards on them, it makes it very difficult to get financing on those properties because there's no action going on per se. So my goal for this town is to make sure that we have buildings that aren't vacant, that there's buildings that try to get businesses into those buildings and hopefully they're with Cecil County residents that want to put a business here in the town. So I asked, in this brainstorm idea that we've been putting a kicking together here, has been that the town would guarantee the acquisition price for a person that wanted to come in and acquire a property in our town and then put a business into that building. The goal here is to get away from a lot of the absentee landlords that we have. Good, bad, or indifferent, I like to start off by saying we have two properties in the town of Elton now that stick out to me like sore thumbs. The old 107 North Street and then the old Western Auto property on Main Street. They're both owned by a really nice person, but he lives in Florida. He's collecting enough rent off of both of those properties, but I can tell you, the values are going down every day. There's no intent to do anything into those properties. And if there's a broken glass or window, he will put, my guess would be, his guess, my guess would be that there could possibly be plywood going onto that window. And quite frankly, I'm not sure what, if we can or cannot stop him from doing something like that. Now, that's worst scenario of things that I'm talking about, but I can tell you, the real world is, is they aren't, they haven't been rented, and they haven't been rented for, how long would you say, Mary Jo?
Well, the one building, the county moved out in, what, 2002?
No, it's been seven, six?
Yeah, we moved up here in 2002.
Two.
Well.
They were there a couple of years and then moved out.
That's a great example. It hasn't been, there hasn't been anyone in there in that amount of time. And if anyone's ever been on the outside of that building or on the inside, it's decaying every day. And we need to encourage someone to take these buildings and put a business in them and build that tax base back up for us. So that was my goal. And I know I picked out two properties in particular, but there's multiple properties throughout the whole town. On Route 40, there's properties that we could use help with also. So I invited Mike to come in and kind of talk to us a little bit about how the program, from the banking perspective, from the Columbia Bank, how it would work. And I guess I'm going to kind of tee it off by saying, I'm the guy that wants to buy a property in downtown Elton. I would come to you and I'd make application. So if you could go from this application process and kind of explain where we could go and how we can do it.
Okay. First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to be here to discuss a little bit about the program. I think to take one step back, obviously, once, if, should this plan be approved, I think the first step for the applicant or the potential applicant would be for them to stop into the town and inform the town of their opportunities or their interest in buying a commercial property or, you know, property somewhere within the town limits. I think the first step is, is identifying that the property makes sense. I think you all would have a specific either diagram or streets or area mapped out to say that if the applicant was interested, this property would qualify. Almost like they do in Baltimore City, they have enterprise zones. You would create some sort of enterprise zone. So that would be the first step. And then you would direct them to, you know, to us, right, to the Columbia Bank, to make application. And then we would go through the due diligence, just like we would any other applicant who came in interested in a commercial property. We would go through a series of, collection of all the financial statements, including business financials, if they have a business already. If not, maybe some sort of business plan, if they're looking to start a new business. I know we discussed, you know, a bakery, for example, if we want to see some sort of business plan, personal financial statement, so a couple of years of tax returns, as well as a personal financial statement they would complete. We'd also have a form that we would have them sign. I think that the town would also help prepare, would give us the opportunity to share any information that we collect with your finance team that you all set up, so that you all would have the same information that we did. And there would be throughout the, throughout the program, throughout the process, we could share information back and forth, obviously with the, with the committee, you know, established by the town. So they would go through that process. We would look to qualify those individuals. And, you know, the goal would be is, if there was some concerns that we had, we would share those concerns, not only with the applicant, but also with, with the town as well. And then it would be really, as far as the Columbia Bank is concerned, you know, we're going to credit qualify that individual based on their ability to repay the debt. So for instance, they're taking out a half a million dollar loan. We want to make sure that, that they have the means to pay that back, of course. Where the challenge is, as the mayor clearly pointed out, with real estate in this area that, as we consider unimproved real estate, there's no tenant there, boarded up windows, there's no business that's, that's there yet, there's no business that's potentially coming in, there's a, that's a great risk to the bank, because when we look at that project, we say, there really isn't an opportunity for us, for them to pay us back. Where are, where is the opportunity, where's the ability for them to repay the debt? And without an improved property, without a tenant in there, without an established business, you know, we're relying on the personal strength of the individual to repay the debt. So I think where the program comes in is, is that it gives the bank that added assurance that the town is going to cover this, should there be a shortfall or should there be an inability by the tenant or the applicant to repay the debt. Obviously, as far as I'm concerned, as far as the bank is concerned, that is a very, very last resort. We will look to work with that individual as much as possible, you know, to collect any and all payments from them to service the debt before we come back to the town to ask for you to make us whole or for you to cover the debt service on that property. So as we go through the process, you know, I think again, we, we qualify them on, you know, their ability to repay. And then the next steps, should they qualify, we would then order an appraisal to establish the value of the property to ensure that, you know, the collateral is there, because the bank always looks to be collateralized as well. Again, brings up an excellent point in the fact that some of these properties that haven't been occupied for some time, as the mayor clearly pointed out, the values have dropped substantially. There's a big difference between a property that's been abandoned, you know, and a property that has an established and thriving business. And it really makes a huge difference in the value. So as far as we're concerned, another risk to the bank is, is when somebody buys unimproved property that needs X amount of dollars in work, it's very, very hard to establish and for them to be able to borrow exactly what they need to, you know, to cover the loan or to cover the request that they're looking for. So again, typically in a situation where you're buying a property that needs to be improved, they may have to put 10, 20, 50, $100,000 worth of work into that building before it's available and ready to cover a tenant or their business. So, you know, another, another risk, I guess, to the bank is where we're concerned, is we like to stay within a certain percentage of the value, or we would call that a loan to value. So for instance, the bank likes to be at about 80% loan to value, and that's standard on any real estate, commercial real estate transactions. It's even standard on your residential. If you go to buy a home, they want you to put down 20%. Now, there are programs that allow you to put down less, but traditionally, we like 20% down. Well, in the case that the client or the individual, the applicant doesn't have that 20%, you know, where we fall back on is the town's guarantee allows the transaction to move forward without that 20% down. Or maybe not without the, you know, without the additional patch to improve the property to make it habitable for either a tenant or for their business. So again, it takes a lot of the risk that, you know, and I'm not just speaking for the Columbia Bank, I'm speaking for all banks. It takes the risk by having the town step in and say, you know, we're going to guarantee this on our full vacant credit, that regardless of what happens in this situation, you know, the town is going to back up this particular loan. And I presented an example to, to, to the mayor and to Steve Repel was, it's very similar to what the SBA does. If anybody's ever worked or heard of the SBA, the SBA offers a guarantee through the federal government for businesses that are looking to get established or get started. They guarantee a portion of the loan. Now typically, the SBA will guarantee between 50 and 70% of the loan, which takes a lot of the risk off the bank. So the bank is only holding a small portion of that, which allows us to be able to lend to those individuals, to those applicants, to those businesses that we wouldn't normally let do. So that, as far as I'm concerned, is the overview. We would, after the decision was made on our end to approve the loan, we would present the same information, the same package, along with a presentation that we would do. At the Columbia Bank, we have a loan committee where we pass through all, typically all of our loan requests through, and that committee would vote on that request based on the information that was in the presentation, as well as the financial information and the applicant's ability to repay the debt. We would indicate on that presentation some strengths, some weaknesses, some potential risks, and then any mitigants to that risk. We would also establish, at the Columbia Bank, and other banks are very similar, we would establish a risk rating. Our risk ratings at the Columbia Bank go from, you know, a one to, you know, a seven. You know, one obviously being the best, and don't have many clients that fit into that one space, but our typical risk rating is a four, five. Anything above a five, we typically pass on. Anything less than that, we usually, we try to figure out a way to get it approved. So I think we would establish some sort of a risk rating for that credit. We would share all this information with you, as we're allowed to, because our, our authorization from the client allows us to be able to share information back with the town. Our recommendations would go to your committee, loan committee if you will, and you would make a decision, do we want to put our stamp of approval on this, do we want to guarantee this request, or do we want to pass?
A question, I got a question, Mike. In our, and I'm going to use the downtown as an example, because I'm using those couple of buildings. We did a master plan in 2003. There was types of retail business that we were shooting for. If, and I'm not trying to say that we're the ones that can make that determination, but there's a certain segment of business, I'm going to use, I know by zoning, certain businesses aren't allowed in our downtown. But in, in the Columbia Bank, if a customer came in and, and I want to be very careful why I want to say what type of, if a massage parlor was allowed in, in Elton, and that person came to your business and then they came to us, can we deny that? You guys, do you accept those?
We have specific industries that we discourage, and there are ones that are on our list of, that we do not lend to. So I can't answer that specific question as opposed, as far as a specific industry. I could probably provide that information to you.
John, do you have any feedback on that, or is it, since we're the guarantor, do we, do we have the order, we don't have, if this program's out there, we can say no if it's our guarantor? Is that correct?
I think that, I think that we can, by virtue of encouraging or discouraging certain plates of development. However, there are certain protected groups that we couldn't discriminate against. But understanding that, that sort of constitutional framework.
Yeah.
It comes with industry and that sort of thing. I don't see why not.
Okay. The other comment I had, the guarantee program was, the concept was a 60-month program. We would guarantee this loan for 60 months. And how do we exit out of that? Help me understand how, if we sign off on it, the town of Elton, at the end of 60 months, they've met all the requirements, how do we do this without causing fees and costs to the business owner?
Right. So we could have a limited guarantee, if you will, so that the town would have a guarantee that would extend only for five years. And again, I brought up an excellent example in the past, was you and I own a business together, I want to get out of the business, Mary Jo wants to get into the business, I personally guaranteed the loan, you personally guaranteed the loan, we go to the bank, I want out of the loan, the bank would simply substitute the guarantee of me with Mary Jo. So example would be, the client or the applicant has had the loan now for five years. It's, the, the town is out, for instance, it's been five years. The individual and the business is now self-sustainable, right? They can pay their debts, they're established, and they're successful. Well, the bank would substitute the town's guarantee for the individual or the business guarantee.
Okay.
And also at that time, can the substitute be, if the state stepped in with the Neighborhood Business Work Program?
Absolutely.
And take 50% of that risk and, so if we're looking at a million dollar building and they take over the $500,000, and we could do that at the beginning as well on the client, I'm sure, whatever's in best feel for them.
Right. Yeah, the, the, the substitute guarantor can be, you know, essentially anyone. The town, I think, they, and I pose the question, right, is, is the risk to the bank is, is that if the business is not successful after five years, what do we do? You know, and the, the, the bank does not necessarily, or would discourage the town from removing their guarantee. So that would be a conversation to have, as, as the town, do you want us, you know, do you want to remove your guarantee from this, from this particular transaction? Or do you want to give him another year, or another two years, or another five years? Now, part of the process would be that every year, we're getting together, so assume we make the, we make the loan, the first loan, every, every year, we get together and we share the financial information. So the client, as required by the bank, is going to provide us with all their financials every year, so we can review, just to, just to make sure, to ensure that the client is successful and they still have the ability to repay. And information would be shared with you all. And I think, you know, being here in the town, you all would recognize whether the business was successful or not. If that business wasn't successful, we would know about that as we're approaching that fifth year, and be having that conversation with those individuals to encourage them to, you know, whether it be a close down, whether it be to bring in a new partner, whether it be to change the business model a little bit. This, all of this information should already, we should already be having these conversations. So at the end of five years, again, the risk is, the town wants out. The bank isn't really comfortable with it, and the client hasn't really shown an, an ability to repay. And then the steps from there would be, if the town's out, we then go, we would then have to go up for the individual and the business.
Assuming I was the business owner who's looking to invest in this program, and I'm concerned, who's has the privilege to look at my financial information?
Sure.
What protection do you give for me to not share that information to anybody who has the right to this? And how I know this information's not going to be used to, to use?
Right.
I want to know what steps you?
Sure. That's a great question. So as far as the bank is concerned, you know, we're under obligation not to share our information, information that we collect with anyone else. The only exception to that rule is, again, if it's going through the loan program, there would need to be an established list out there of who's on the loan committee at, at the town. So when you sign, when you make application with us, you also make application with the town, authorizing that the appropriate parties, and they should be named, in my opinion, they should be named as individuals, so you know that when you're making application for this program, you know everybody that's going to be looking at this transaction, including the bank, as well as individuals from the town who would be making the decision to approve or not to approve the guarantee. Does that, does that make sense?
EJ, any comments, questions?
I delve into the details. Some things that, I like the opportunity to invest in around the town. I have concerns as far as the board overriding an institution that's been established for such a long time, as far as the LTV, the DTI, anything like that, that if we try to reinvent the wheel by taking caps off, like having raised that $50,000 cap, by removing those caps and stuff, I think it would be, it could put the town in a, in a situation. But again, I haven't seen any details to, to take a look at. Looking forward to taking, to looking at the details, I want to see them.
Right. And I think, you know, I think our recommendation is going to be based on how we feel as the bank about the request. And I think, you know, that would hold a lot of weight with, with you all, right? Because we have, you know, qualified individuals, we have a loan committee that'd be looking at this request as well. So not only would it have to pass our test, but before we even presented to you all, we would identify strengths, weaknesses, risks, and then mitigants to those risks.
So if it's four or five or greater, the risk is greater than four or five, by your standards, you wouldn't even bring it back to the town then?
Well, we could. I mean, that would be an option. We could bring it back to the town, because I'll tell you, the, the strength of the town means a whole lot to the bank.
It makes it a one.
Right. It essentially, it essentially does. It brings it down to a place where we would approve it, even if we didn't really feel comfortable. Okay? So that's the strength in, in the town. That's where it's going to fall back on you to say, you know, we feel comfortable about this project, comfortable enough that we're willing to guarantee.
And as far as us exiting at the end of five years, we would have to have something in writing, that it would have to mean some type of level.
Right. So, so my recommendation to mayor, to mayor alt, was that we do a five-year loan. So typically, when a real estate transaction, the, the common loan would be a five-year fixed rate loan with a 20-year amortization. So the individuals, the businesses would have payments spread out like over 20 years. However, at the end of five years, the loan would be mature. So the bank is out, the town is out, the client at that point, the applicant would have the opportunity to either renew with the bank, assuming that they're creditworthy, they would renew with the Columbia Bank or any other bank out there. They would refinance with another bank, or they would pay us off. So that, that's the, as far as I'm concerned, that five years gives us both the out. It's very, very common in the commercial lending world that we, we have a five-year balloon loan, after that five years is up, then they have to refinance.
The, I want to say the, what I consider the risk for the town is that if the business fails, we own a problem. And I guess if there's a good news out of it, we find another business to go back into that building. Or, and we got to hope that the improvements that they put into that vacant building that's sitting there deteriorating has the value is going up. So theoretically, if everything goes correctly, and once again, it's just theoretically, the value of that property should be greater in five years than what it was when it was acquired.
And that's exactly the way I'm looking at this. Let's take another downtown building, because that's what I'm more familiar with. We have a first floor commercial and upstairs, two floors of apartments. If it was vacant, or maybe if there was one or two tenants in the apartments upstairs, but someone wanted to purchase that building because the income coming in right now is only $1,000 a month, perhaps, the bank would not guarantee, give them that loan. But if we have this guarantee program and we're, we're the collateral there, and they get their loan, they fix up the apartments, they fix up the first floor, they rent it out, now they're in great shape to take over their own loan without the help of the town or someone else, because there is income being generated from that building. And that's the way I look at this program.
Lou, any comments? What's the typical interest rate that would, why in a case where the town guarantees a loan?
So generally, let me, let me start by answering the question. If they came to us without the guarantee of the town, interest rate would range somewhere around 4% to about 5.5. Again, depending on the risk, real estate is involved. So there's a lot of things that factor into what the interest rate would be. One, a typical transaction, loan value would be one, the ability to repay, the cash flow coverage or the debt coverage ratio, as well as the strength of the individuals who are guaranteeing. When you add the component of the town, that interest rate could be substantially lower, somewhere in the three, could be in the 3% range.
Mr. Lemon?
Is there a maximum amount that the town would guarantee?
At this point, we haven't even got to that point.
So there's two things, the maximum amount and the total amount that you would do over X amount of property?
One of my discussions with the Columbia Bank, and Mike will get back to us with the answer, but as an umbrella, currently, right now, when you look at the, the towns, if you can, if you can understand that financial audit, and it's very difficult for me to understand it, quite frankly, it's, I don't know how many pages it is, but it's on our website, but there's a little bit of language in there that states that, and I know Steve's going to get mad at me when I say this, but it appears to me that we can, our debt can be up to $54 million, the town of Elton. Now, I want to get that clarified by Steve, but that's the way that I read it. $54 million. Now, my earlier discussions with Mike is, it would be that the Columbia Bank would kind of give us a credit line, the town of Elton, a credit line of whether it's $2 million or $10 million credit line, and that's what we can kind of use, use out of. But there hasn't been a pinpoint amount that an individual person could use or business could use, depending on the business model that they're bringing to us.
My suggestion is that as you get into this, you think of the total amount.
A total amount.
Overall, that the town would commit to before it stopped committing.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I really would like to know though, where we put types of businesses that are, well, this was just a sample, not eligible. If we say certain types of businesses are not eligible for the program, if legally, we can do that. So I'd really like to know that answer. Or can it be said that... Or can we say that we do the program that fits our downtown master plan with the redevelopment or something? So.
Well, the comp plan drives.
And the comp plan, I know that, and I know what's, what's, you know, what's already in the code, the restrictions within this, within the code, we have to follow.
And what do you bet?
I said like 54 million, what's it say? Forty-nine million. Yeah, it wasn't too bad, oh, 49 million. All right, I bumped it up a little bit. That was because of last year's assessments going down.
Well, at 6:30, 14, we had 49 million available.
The, once again, the goal of this program has, has been if we don't take some type of action, we could have these vacant buildings for many, many more years to come. So is our risk to keep them vacant and let it happen as it happens? Or try to be more aggressive and try to fill those spots? And I think that's the thought that we need to think about.
You want us to create jobs.
It will create jobs. I mean, that's the whole, whole part of this program. But Mike, thank you so much for coming. Thank you for being with us.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Todd, we got Todd, oh, next.
Todd's going to talk about the concept plan that KCI developed to add the 26 trillion faces out there. Yeah, it's cold here today. I love the heat. Thank you. As you're aware, there are, this is parking divisions in here at the town. And 34 years ago, you don't know when, but so together.
Is anyone here from Button Woods? I'm one down. It probably be, oh. This concerns you more than anyone. Have a seat there so you can take a look at this. Your name?
Kurt Howard.
Kurt, I should have known that.
Where do you live, Kurt?
Four or seven.
I'm sorry, four or seven.
Four or seven Button Woods.
And these, these parking lots won't affect them.
Okay.
The interesting is that the deficient, the major deficiencies are in the 100 and 500 block of the community. A few years back, we started to address the parking issues by providing this road parking in the middle, you know, 18 spaces that we added. I believe it helps some, but it sounds like for at least the 100 and 500 block section of the community, there's still a significant need for additional parking. So I met with coworkers and those happened to be able to give me back and look at the whole additional locations where we could supplement additional parking. And the areas we looked at are closer to that 100 and 500 block section. It's along that same interlude road, Buttonwood Road. And as you can exhibit, on the western side, we're looking to potentially add 16 spaces there with a sidewalk that would actually directly link to the sidewalk in front of those units. And on the eastern side, we're showing about 10 spaces that we could fit in that location. We can, with a sidewalk that would directly link to that section of the community. Again, not, not knowing the full details of how the whole parking situation can work out, I don't know that these would necessarily be restricted to those communities, to those sections of the community, but they would definitely be in a closer proximity to the area of the most needed.
Todd, is it, is it correct to say that if we add this additional parking, every home in the Button Woods community would have two? It would give them two parking spots per household?
I don't know that I, I haven't run the numbers directly. Look, do you know what the final definition was? I can look into that and give you a total breakdown. I know that when we were looking at the original plan for the community, there were some variations from what was originally the group. Some of the existing parking lots, there was like a spot that was added or a spot removed. One space, one of these, particularly notice there was a larger, not said larger, but eight spaces. Look on the right-hand side, where we're showing the additional 10 spaces. Between there and the lower half, there were supposed to be another eight spaces provided right here, similar to what you see on the other side. For whatever reason, those were never constructed when the original community was built. Not sure why, how, but yeah, just like you see over here, these spaces here, they're supposed to be in the same type of layout right in that location.
I'm trying to look where you're showing.
Right. Look, right here, see these spaces right there?
Yeah.
They're supposed to be a similar layout of parking.
Oh, wow.
I think it was about eight that was designed for that location that were, for whatever reason, it's never installed. I know that in the 100 and 500 block, it's definitely less than one space, or less than two spaces per unit. I think when you get to the back section of the community, there is a greater number, at least closer to two and a half per, per unit, but towards the front, it's definitely lower. I can go back and run the numbers a little bit quickly and give you a breakdown of how many spaces we would have per unit based on the additional 26 we're showing now.
I think Dan or maybe Gene might know. Do you know if that's going to be sufficient for two parking spots?
I'm sorry, what was that there?
Will that, will that give us two spots per household? I, I know you're probably.
Yeah, when I, a while back looked at it, it looked like just in the 100 and the 500 block, that's where you were short.
Yeah.
You would be less than two. And you needed, my quick calculations were you needed eight more on the 100 block and five more on the 500 block to make it two per.
And this, and this gives us more than?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That's what, when I saw this, I, this is actually creating a little bit of overflow to a degree. And then our overflow is currently on the road. All right. What's your?
One, I'm sorry, one other thing you'll see on the plan. When we did the initial, additional 18 spaces a few years back, we were right at that threshold of whether we needed to provide additional storm management for that parking lot. At the time, we were going back and forth and we decided not to handle it at that time because it was, it was in that range where we, we didn't really need to do it. Now that we're adding or looking to add additional spaces, we're obligated to provide additional storm management to address additional curvy cover. So one thing you have, I've shown an area right now, conceptually, where we might go to install a rain garden, which would be, it would treat actually the runoff from this upper courtyard area to offset what we're looking to do with the parking areas down on the roadway. It's in an area that right now is part of open space or right of way. And it's actually, there's already an existing inlet that would easily retrofit and do some minor grading to provide that. From the surface, it would actually be a visual amenity, the amenity of a basically a rain garden, like garden that, you know, would help actually improve visibility of that area.
I think that's what they have over here at the new building, that rain garden.
Yes.
How they have it's a, it's a, it's a nice layout.
I'm, I'm assuming your comments were going to be about, or listening about the parking. What do you think? Help us, help us shed some light on this.
I think most people just want to have a spot near their house. Right now it's free fall. So, I live in the 400, but personally, I don't care. By far, it's almost my wife, whoever's not living with my wife, kid, or her children, when they come home. But right now, like, there's no, leave, couple houses up. Take her spot, she has to walk back through. When you shovel, when it snows, most people don't shovel. You do, somebody's going to come in and pull in your spot.
Take your spot. It's when the blood pressure gets up.
Somebody did this year. So kids can get in, so somebody do it, first thing, they don't shovel their spot, they're pulling your one. I don't say everybody has to have two, I think everybody's had one spot, they knew they had home, they, it's like, have kids do it. Come home later night, 10 o'clock, they're asleep. It's raining, you don't want to carry them from all the way down the end of, thing to your.
Yeah.
And I follow you. What I understand is we can't guarantee a spot. We can, that right in front of your house, that's your spot. We can't do that. That we can guarantee that you have two spots, they may be down, one down there, one over here. And I'm not wrong on that, right, Louis?
The, what we wanted to do is have special purpose parking here, which would allow two spaces per person.
But not necessarily right in front of your house.
Yeah, it's not guaranteed parking. But I think, I think, with the exception of snow, during normal weather, people gravitate towards where their homes are. Nobody's going to park down here, walk over there. They're going to kind of park where their home is because they only have two spaces. But before we issue special purpose parking in this area, we need to have a place for people to go that have three cars or four cars. So that's why we have these extra spaces. And we need to put that in place before we actually restrict people to park in there because they got to someplace to go. That's, that's why the concept was developed. And as Todd said, because of the additional impervious surface, we need to have a stormwater. So that adds another burden of expense to do this, but it'll be necessary. Fortunately, we own the land, so, you know. So the, if a person does not have a parking permit, they're not allowed to park?
They can park out here.
They could park in the auxiliary area.
To allow these as overflow parking.
But they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be allowed to park in that row where you live?
No, not, not in the area, not in the block.
If they don't have the permit. So I think it'll help. There's still challenges of, of whether or not, that snow one's a tough one because I can tell you, I know how I'd feel too. I think we all feel the same way. We've digested, I know the, it's, it's a shame that when Button Woods was built, it was under homeowners association and you had assigned spots.
Yes, when you first got there.
When you first got there. And when the, and when the, when the homeowners association went under, all the open space, including the parking lots, a responsibility turned over to the town of Elton. And by our charter, we, we can't allow a parking space to be, how do I want to say it?
Exclusive.
Designated, what's that?
Exclusive.
Exclusive to that spot. I'm sure that, John, let me ask you, is there, is there an exception to the rule? Is there, is there options?
As they say, there's exceptions to every, but a way we can figure that out. I don't know, maybe Gene can wrestle.
I know it's a challenge, but if we can provide two spots to everybody, maybe we can designate one spot in front of their house if the board would want to go forward with that. And then the other spot is wherever it is.
The obvious, at least, if the homeowners association.
That's the answer.
They've actually tried that again. There's a lot of renters now since the mortgage crash, out of empty houses.
I, I think our first step is, I think our first step is we have to get the parking in. And I like the plan. And how's everyone else feel with it?
I know a gentleman had said, most people want something right by their house. I don't see too many people going out in the street parking, walking across the street to their house. I mean, I know it creates an extra parking space, but again, we still have those residents that have three and four drivers in the, in their household. Again, the one parking permit allows for each person to park and then use that overflow and direct to that overflow. That's basically what we have to do. We can't just try to create two parking spaces. Right now, we got to try to give that one parking space to each owner of their house. So they, like, he said, if we have someone that needs to be in front of their house, need to be there. But then I heard a gentleman come here and say he had a truck and he couldn't park his truck out on the road because of his equipment and all this other stuff. So you're going to have to, more issued up than just two parking spaces.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. This here, the old, the outside on the road, that's to me is overflow. But not here, we're looking for the overflow, we're looking for a parking space in front of the house.
I kind, I like this plan there, how they have an option, they have another place to park. We're talking 26 spaces additional to what's there now. If they do have company or an extra car or whatever. I think it's something we tried before, the permit parking, because of the cost of that through administration, the permit parking. And I just think if we're going to do this, let's see how that goes first.
Well, we'll bring it to the vote on Wednesday. Everyone feel good? Enough information? All right, Todd, thank you. Thank you.
What we'll do is if the board approves this, we'll authorize KCI to actually do the design of the parking lot. So you'll have to shoot some elevations and things?
Yeah, particularly on the west side, there's a, it drops off a good bit. We'll absolutely make sure that we can get some ready for here, but.
Okay. And then the design, the, yeah.
Ron, you had a question?
Yeah, can I have a copy?
Yeah, here, give it to mine. There you go.
I'm not really familiar with where Button Woods was.
Right behind Red.
I'm sorry?
Behind Red.
Thank you. All right, we got, next up, I think you, Mr. Verizon? Verizon, Todd?
Okay. I've been housing. He was, he was consulting with representatives, in his case, representatives of Verizon Wireless. He put a.
Are you doing it? Yeah, right here.
Okay, sit down, everybody.
For just a few minutes.
No worries. But it's important, it's important to Verizon, I think, to secure the space. The only caveat here is that the, the town is attempting to acquire the property from the wrong transportation authority because we don't move property. We only have an easement for the tower. But my last communication with the company that's representing our transportation authority back in December was that they didn't object to conveying the property to the town. It just takes probably eight months to do it because ultimately it has to go through all the bureaucracy of the state. And then it goes, it'll finalize, be finalized by going to the state public works, you know, the state for public works for approval. Now, the only thing I'm concerned about, and I sent a letter out today to the MTA going, that we hadn't received anything on appraisals or anything on the property yet. So I was, I was surprised that we haven't got anything, get it for all this time. But anyway, I'll keep the word up. But meantime, I think that Verizon wants to do some, do some work here. At your risk, of course, I'm.
Well, there's a couple things. One is that we have, it's correct, we spent a couple of months kind of investigating this and put a proposal in front of Mr. George at the end of March. And so he asked me to come down and just speak to you guys about that. And all we want to do is pretty much do the same thing we did on the Blue Ball tank over there on Bell, Bell Hill.
Bell Hill.
Bell Hill. And the only caveat that I would say that's not in this that I just spoke to Dan Hamley about over the past 30 days or so is that there's a request of the public works to, while we're doing our installation, to reattach the antenna that came down when we started the painting tank. And I just was over there, the public works officer, this afternoon, get a feel for what antenna he needed, what needed to be done. Rest assured, we can do that at our cost and expense. We're going to work with this consultant from Magnus Electronics, who we worked with in the city of Herohot before, make sure we have all the details and can incorporate that in. So knowing that the transference would not occur until August timeframe is kind of what we were anticipating, Verizon's willing to wait, we can possibly do some work ahead of time, which is getting some phase ones done, some drawings done, all at our, our risk and need. But we understand that there's not a deal done until the end of day, the agreement signed by all parties, mutually acceptable. So we totally understand that. If we can get a flavor that yes, the MTA is going to do it, and yes, the timeframe's still the same, then certainly Verizon would take, Verizon why should take some steps to actually try to expedite that so that we can build that into our 2016 tablet plan and be constructing the end of the year, possibly early spring of next year to get this thing up and operational.
What was the acquisition of the land for?
I'm sorry?
What's that?
We don't know that. The, the town was only granted a perpetual easement by the, by the state.
Okay.
For the placement of the tower.
So the.
But at the time, that was done back in the 80s. I don't know why the town didn't actually acquire, be simple, that property rather than a perpetual easement. But it could have been the policy of the state at that time, only to do it in that sense. But since that time, they, that policy could have changed, I would.
And if I can add that, while we did some of our title dosers work, I spent probably two and a half months chasing the MTA and the request of the town. Because they owned it and they said, we don't, the town of Elton. We're like. And we're like, God, that's not really what's on the books right now. So I think.
I don't think they knew they owned it.
And they didn't know they owned it, to be honest with you. So the whole idea of the deed of conveyance seems to be of a, more of a records keeping thing only because in their mind, they thought we owned it all right.
I would have thought we owned it also. Did we ever look?
A lot of people think that.
Did you look back at the minutes?
Oh, yeah.
But there's nothing recorded that we could find. So from our perspective, yeah. So if we can get that deed of conveyance, obviously the chain of title will be cleared. You guys would have the thing simple would be a whole lot cleaner.
Very good.
Verizon's willing to wait for that to happen and understand that anything we would do ahead of time is totally in our business, which is the only thing.
Currently, we have other antennas up there.
Do we have? No, not there. We have nothing there.
Nothing on that tower?
No. The actual public works. Verizon Wireless is at the Blue Ball Tower. And Sprint is at the, what, Warham Hill Tower.
Very good.
But I think you did your propagation study.
Yeah, it looks great.
Okay, so it's a good location.
Very location for us. We're going to mount the catwalk, is our intention. We don't need the height. And talking to Mr. Handley, probably, and we got to work with the consultant, is your public works antenna, which used to be on the side, given the, what I learned today of the nature of the system, I would tell you that you probably want that up on top as the most radius and coverage you can get in case you have to go to the north side of the tank, which would require a mountain. And actually, let's do a little bit of investigation on behalf of the town to make sure you're not violating any of the A-30s. Because you're actually going to see the height and that a little bit. But that's further than.
Very good. From a consensus, Mary Jo, what do you feel?
I'm fine.
I'm fine. We've done this in the past. It's been a nice way to help fund or water fund. I wish it could go to the general fund, but it goes to the order fund. But it's the way it is. And I'm happy to have you partner with us.
Great. We looked at doing it again because we've done it before and have a great relationship. So we just wanted to extend that.
Very good.
All right, any questions? And so I'll work with Mr. George in just trying to figure out, once we get that warm and fuzzy feel, the MTA is definitely moving forward. Because those things do no, do take time. And certainly, we'll talk about next steps and put kind of that.
Yeah, I sent that to Bruce, Regus Anderson.
Yeah, Bruce was the one that actually was on the meeting list.
Yeah, okay. Very good.
Yeah, no worries. All right, thank you for your time.
Yes. Can you get that projector on and we'll start looking at?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We can probably turn that light up a little bit. Is that, is that okay with everyone? You good? Everyone good?
Long time ago, I met for over two months period with the Maryland Transportation Authority, AT&amp;T wanted to put it there. And there was so much bureaucracy involved, stateside, AT&amp;T walked away. They did a small cent for that. So Verizon came back, that's why I wanted to actually get the land. Because AT&amp;T wanted 50% of the income and that was a real elaborate thing. I don't want to even come to that.
No, 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 no. I agree with you. Okay, I guess Steve's going to come back in here in a minute, but we're going to have our, another work session on the town budget today. This is a workshop with the commissioners and I'm going to kind of go over the, somewhat the ground rules today. It's going to be just there depending on how much communication we have to have through here. And then if we have time, again, I'll certainly open it up for any questions that anyone in the audience has today. But our budget, and I'm going to go through the process of our budget process and the public hearing process, but once again, I stress that this is a workshop. Just a little bit about the timeline, just to make sure everyone's very clear on, on the, the way that the budget process works. And I know that we've got a new commissioner and I hadn't done it in 12 years, but I just wanted to stress that if you, you know, I, one of the roles as the mayor, I am the supervisor of the financial administration of the government of the town of Elton. And I have complete supervision over the financial administration with the town. And I really want to stress that I work with our staff all the time. So when we put these numbers together, whether it's our expenditures and our revenues, it's not my numbers. These are actual numbers that we pool when it comes to the revenues coming in. And now the expenditures, of course, I can create or tweak and then I have to ask for the board to support it. My role is to prepare an annual budget and submit it to the board of commissioners. The, at the last meeting, I know that Mayor Kraus was talking about that he had had brought his budget in many, many weeks prior. I want to stress to everyone that this process started in January, would you say, Steve? That we met and I had the town staff, each department created a review of their budget. And one of our challenges that we have is, there's a reason why you try to stress toward the end of the process is that you're not sure of all the changes in the revenues that's coming in. We're dependent on the county to give us projection numbers on our assessments. And when those numbers come in, then we can kind of produce it. But I just wanted to make everyone aware that on Friday, 5/8 provided the green bar paper to the commissioners, and that was 53 days prior to the fiscal year 2016. By our charter, of course, I have to give it to you within 32 days, but you've actually got it in 53 days. And we're having our workshop today, which is 48 days prior to the beginning of the fiscal. Starting tomorrow, it will be advertised in the Cecil Guardian and, let's see, did we have the wig in here? We got the wig on 5/18. So it'll be advertised in both of our local papers, which is consistent with the 27 days prior to the beginning of the fiscal year 2016. Our first actual public hearing will be held on June 3, 2015. And that's in accordance to our budget 27 days prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. Hopefully, we'll vote to adopt it on 6/17. That gives us 13 days prior to the end of the fiscal year. And we can tweak that as we go. We can stay as long as we have to, to approve the budget. But hopefully, everything will move pretty smoothly. The, few of the things, I really don't know how, or to answer the questions, but I'm going to, what I'll do is I'll go through the overview first, and then if you have any questions, kind of feed in as we have the questions and we go. Sound all right? So let's go to the next slide. And I want to also stress that on June, or I'm sorry, on May 28, we will have copies that are bound, bound for the public to have, which would be several days before the budget hearing in June. So everyone can have a copy of the proposed budget. This is from fiscal year 2016, but you'll actually have, oh, that's Mary's, that's not even the budget. Well, it looks like it, right? But it would be, it would be very similar to what Steve has in his hand. Everyone would have a copy of that several days before the public hearing. So the proposed expenditures, as we move forward on this, you'll see, you'll see that in general government, we're looking at spending $1,429,005.73. Public safety, you'll see $6,362,138. Public works is $4,217,156,000. You'll see in parks and rec, $481,000. Our debt service, our debt service for the town, including the debt service that we will be acquiring for capital equipment, would be $457,425. And our economic development money that I want to put forth this year is $200,000. The donations that we are obligated with the fire department, we're projecting that that'll be around $150,600. No, I'm sorry. Our fire department is based on assessments, so we're looking at another $131,735. And $18,865,000 for other community promotion, which I can get into detail with, for a total of $150,600. The total expenditures for the town, $13,298,570. Going to the next slide, you'll see a pie chart of where the expenditures are going. 48% of the town's budget goes to public safety. 32% of our town budget goes to public works. 11% of our budget goes to general government. That's our administration side of our business. 1% it goes to donations. That's that fire company money and the 18,000 in community. 1% of our money goes to economic development. So we spend 1% of our money on promoting our town of Elton. We have 3% in our debt service is our, of our expenditures, and 4% goes into our parks and rec program. So when you look at it from a pie chart perspective, it's probably about what every other town has. Going to the next slide, going to the employees. We have proposed adding, I highlighted cheat. We have proposed adding one new full-time position at the public works department and two seasonal workers. We have, trying to get fully staffed when it comes to public safety. And as you can see, we're proposing to fully fund 111 positions. Currently, we are at, Steve, about 102. I think we're at 102, but we were budgeted last year for 109, eight or nine positions. I should know that all the time again, but about 108 positions. But we've never been able to fill the public, the police officer positions. And I will talk a little bit about that here on another slide or two. So go to the next slide for me. So when you look at our full-time employees, 51% of our employees in the town are for our public safety side. That's our police department, our non-civilian, or I guess it would be our civilian.
Support services.
Support services, our crossing guards, our meter person that we're still, have budgeted for, but we haven't been able to find one yet. And then, of course, public works is 31% of our workforce is in public works. And then 15% is in administration. And then actually, about 3% is in parks and rec. So that kind of makes up for what our workforce is for the town. Into the next slide. The general overviews of the budget. We're going to propose the same property rate as we had last year. And that property rate is .5856. And that's the same rate as the town had in, I think, probably the last two previous years, but that's the last we had. Now, there's a proposal, currently, when you look at number two, the town of Elton is, our contract with Waste Management is coming up in August.
August.
So we're going to be putting that out on bid. Now, it happens to fall right into this fiscal year. So we can take the position that there's not going to be any rate increases. We can take the position that it's going to go down, or we can take the position it's going to go up. What we did is we, we kind of assumed a 3% increase in the program.
For 11 of the 12 months of the year.
For the 11 of the 12 months. And we also assumed that with the added landfill fees.
For the shortage, the reduction in our, rather than coming down for landfill.
The county has, there's a reduction of the rebate. So to make a long story short, there could possibly be a 69 cent increase in your trash collection fee, and that would be a monthly additional cost to the taxpayers of the town. Quarterly, that's only a quarter. Okay. I should have read it a little closer. 69 cents per quarter increase in the worst scenario. I believe the worst scenario. I hope the best scenario is, is that I can not only take that 69 cents off, but I could also dramatically drop it with this new contract coming through. But once again, I'd be speculating, I wouldn't be doing the residents the right thing if I didn't put it that way. The proposed salary adjustments. The Elton Police Department is, has collective bargaining with the town, which was voted on in what year, Lou?
The last agreement was.
The last, you know, it was 2014 or something.
It was, it was, it was 2000.
Oh, you mean original?
Original.
Oh, my God. I don't even know.
Well, it was a collective, okay, there was a collective bargaining with the police department years ago.
There was a charter amendment.
That's correct.
Run by special referendum and the voters voted to allow them collective bargaining.
That's, that's the point I was going to, is that the voters of the town, the residents of the town of Elton voted in favor of having collective bargaining for a police department. And that happened about eight years ago, nine years ago. And there's guarantees when you do that. And part of the guarantee is that the Elton Police Department officers get a 5% increase this year, 2% for the cost of living, and a 3% increase on their anniversary date. That also does not include the pension side of the program, which they are, give me the pension number.
16%.
16% pension program that the town contributes into. Now, not all of that. Hopefully, if, if their investments make up for that, is that correct? Maybe you can explain that for us, Steve.
Well, the collective bargaining has eventually, that the employees, the police contribute 8% of their own salary for it. Right now, an actuarially calculated contribution from the town is that 16% to cover, you know, the benefits, the future benefits for retirees that is recasulated every two years by the actuary. It went from 14.7% to 16%.
Okay.
And again, the earnings from the investments are such to potentially decrease that or earnings. I mean, that's an art that they would potentially do these activities.
So there's, there's dollars with the police department that this board and myself really have no control over. It was a collective bargaining agreement. We do the best to honor our agreements, you know, residents' agreements. It was a, we all voted for it. I'm not saying we all voted for it, but we voted for it and that's what we have. Non-police employees, that's the rest of the employees of the town. There hadn't been an increase with our employees, other than selective employees received an increase. Hasn't been one since, I believe, 2011 was the year that we look back to. So the, the concept here is to give a 5% across the board to all our employees, starting July 1, 2015, which would be a salary adjustment. July 1, 2015, which would be a salary adjustment. Item number four, the highlight of the, of the budget, is to recognize full staffing for the Elton Police Department. We, we are, we have 45 sworn officers that we have budgeted for, and this amount is for the budgeted salary and benefits reduced by, let's see, what we got? Currently, we have four, we have eight vacancies.
Three, three.
Yeah, we currently have eight vacancies, and we're going to have a ninth, and, and it's because of retiring. Our challenge has been, and it's in the same challenge that we've had probably the last three, four, or five years, it's very difficult to get full staff when it comes to police officers. We go through the process, which does cost the town of Elton quite a few dollars. We go through the testing, the physical exams, the, the polygraph tests, and then they have to accept it, and if they accept it, of course, then we go through the, the police academy training. There's a lot to this. We budgeted for full staff for the last several years, and quite frankly, we never get to that point. Chief Donnelly and Lieutenant Walder have both agreed that even though we're budgeting for this full amount in this budget, we're not too optimistic that we will have a full staff of officers for this fiscal year. In fact, my gut feeling, if I was to speculate, I think that we'll still be four to five officers short. I hope not, but I believe that that's just going with the way the history has been. The Department of Public Works is looking at doing a reorganization of the department down there. A few of the different changes that has been requested. One, creating a new position for an additional mechanic. Currently, we have one full-time mechanic down there. We have one full-time helper or Lou guy. And at the request of Public Works, they are requesting a second mechanic that would be able to get the job done faster and better for our residents, and getting our equipment back on the road faster, and getting our job done quicker. There's also a request to put in two additional part-time seasonal maintenance workers. Current maintenance worker position, with this reorganization, we're going to take one of the current maintenance workers and make them that small tool mechanic position. We're also going to take a current part-time seasonal position to be filled with a part-time clerk, and then we're going to reclass maybe one, two, or even three different people down there that works for Public Works into different positions also. When you reclassify them, of course, that becomes a cost with that also. Give me another page. Okay. The, I assume, this is an assumption that the fringe benefits, the projected healthcare costs, and is it a solid number of 9%?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't want to hear that today. But it is a solid increase of 9%. So that's another projected cost that's going up to an additional 9%. I allocated $200,000 for economic development, and I, I stress this time and time again, and I think earlier, talking with Mike Goodson from the Columbia Bank, I always feel that if you don't reinvest in yourself, if you don't promote yourself, you're, you're going to, you're going to go the wrong way. And the worst thing that can happen to the town of Elton is that the assessments keep going the wrong way. And they have gone the wrong way, and, and most of that was because of the recession we're in. We're coming out of some of the worst times of our lives, and my goal is to try to stimulate that as quickly as we can. But I need that additional money for a few different things. First and foremost, I want to continue to fund the Elton Alliance. I think it's, I, I think that they're a great organization. They were started back prior to when I was elected the first time, and I just look at the work and the effort that they've done, I, I go back, and, and some of our naysayers will say, "Well, you've dumped millions of dollars into your downtown over the last 12, 13, 14, 15 years, and what has it got us?" I can tell you this, if we didn't invest that money in our downtown, I can tell you what it would look like. I can promise you, I know what it would look like if we didn't take that money and invest in our downtown. We'd have these buildings that would be vacant. We would have more shenanigans going on than we could ever imagine. I've seen some great, great improvements over the years. But with some of that money, looking at advertising promotions, software upgrades, looking at 52 new street banners, over 500, or 5,000 new brochures to market our company, I want six new Elton, welcome to Elton signs when you come into the town where they're currently at. And that's above and beyond the wayfinding signs, which I'll talk to you a little bit about. I want to convert the Elton Alliance office into a beautiful welcome center. Let's make it more inviting to our residents when they come into our town. Let's make that a huge focal point. That's going to take a few dollars. New logo design, we want to do, we want to hire a full-time person involved in our economic development. And that person could be coming from within the alliance, or it could be, we need someone that's going to spend time on promoting the town of Elton all the time. And that's where that money's going to go. So along with that, you go to number eight, the Department of Public Works, we're looking at, including $50,000 for the purchase of downtown Christmas decorations. We've used the same decorations for, I don't know how many years, but I can tell you they're falling apart now, and quite frankly, I'm embarrassed when I see them out there trying to use string and duct tape to hold those things up. We, we've promised the residents of East Main Street in front of the church to do the sidewalk project for years and years and years. I want to put it into the budget and get that $70,000 worth of work done. The town of Elton, anyone that comes into the town hall, you'll see that we did some sidewalk grinding out in front. It's a good and a bad thing, quite frankly, and I got to be careful how I say this, I guess, but the, the work that we did out there is excellent. Anytime that you have tree roots, what will happen is the sidewalks will start to raise, and in the town of Elton, we've got, we've had a lot of trees, and the sidewalks have settled or raised, depending on the temperature. And we have to take action to get those things ground down and make it more accessible for the public to walk. These things become trip hazards if you don't take care of the issue. And I'm committed to make this happen. We did the test out here, and I think it turned out wonderfully. I'd like to budget $50,000 for the sidewalk grinding. We would focus in on areas of the town that are our highest pedestrian walk areas, but that doesn't mean it won't be in the neighborhoods that you live. But it has to be done. The total price for precision concrete, I think, was over $200,000, but I think what we do is we take a portion of that, and we budget it each year until we get all of our sidewalks done. Very fortunate that we have a lot of mature streets, most of our streets out here are mature, and all the settling is done. So once we make this ground, I think we're going to find ourselves money well spent. The cost of replacing a, a three-foot by six-foot section of concrete, which we've always done in the past, is several hundred dollars. Our cost on this is about $50 per grind. So $50,000 is going to get us a lot of grinds, I can tell you that. Also, I included in the, in the public works budget, $50,000 for the wayfinding signs project. This is a project that the town has been working on with, I think not only WMAFC, but the state of Maryland has, gave us some parameters on what our signs are supposed to look like, and it's, it happened before me, but it's a project that I believe that we have to find. If you come into our town right now, I don't think anyone would really, with the old signs that we have, you can't even tell where you're going. We're not very inviting. So this project is one that's been worked with the state of Maryland, as well as with WMAFC, and are planning for it. The number 12, the loan proceeds, in the amount of $446,553,000 for the purchase of capital equipment this year. And Steve, you're going to have to help me here. That $446,000 in capital equipment would be debt service that, our debt service for that amount of equipment was $96,000. So what we're doing is borrowing the money to pay for that $446,000, and it would show a debt service of $96,000 for the next five years. I would say it's a five-year notice what it would be. The fund balance that I'm going to need to use in this budget to accommodate everything that I've proposed to the commissioners is about $1,817,857. And that's approximately 41% of the unsigned, unassigned balance that we had as of today, which is $4,456,043. The amount of unassigned, or the, the amount of fund balance that we budgeted for fiscal 15, it's still too early to tell how much of that $753,000 that we are not going to spend. I'm pretty comfortable to tell you that if we didn't acquire those three new, authorize the replacement of the three new police cars, I'm sure that probably none of that would have even been spent going into this fiscal year. I'm pretty comfortable to say that even though we're using $1,817,000, I'm pretty comfortable to say that a large portion of that will probably not even be used based on history and based on not being able to fill the full positions. So that's kind of where I'm at in a nutshell. I wanted to tell you the amount of capital equipment, the items on the capital equipment that we're acquiring real quickly. All right. So in the capital requests, now, these were the highlights that I, that I showed, but there's additional items that we'd like to acquire this year. That's in that number. Along with the highlighted items is a downtown sound system. I'd love to be able to put, and if the board will support this, we're going to have speakers throughout the downtown area that remotely we would be able to send a, an emergency message to our residents of our downtown, as well as come during the holiday season, if we wanted to plug in Elvis Presley, Elvis Presley's holiday sound, we could do that. So to give us the ability to spread the same message throughout our town. During this, next year, we want to continue to promote our town, and I think that this is a way that we can get our message consistently through the area. The Little League, for example, would also be able to use this system when they host their annual parade, when we have the Halloween parade, or whether we have the Memorial Day parade. It would be a system that could be used by everyone that would want to have some type of activity in our downtown, Elton. We also want to fund the body camera systems for our police department. I think that's more important today than ever. I want to stress that, and I may repeat myself here a little bit, but the body cameras, we're currently funding 100% of this, but we will be applying for several grants to help offset the cost of this. But once again, I can't say that we're going to get those grants. Do I feel extremely comfortable that we will? Yes. But I can't count on that. So I have to show you that the town of Elton is paying 100% for these items. So the body camera system is $90,000 on its own. The police vehicles with the equipment we're looking at, the equipment to go into vehicles would be $36,000. It was recommended to me that we acquire six new additional police cars, and that was another $142,000 of that debt service. Today, police vehicles are considered mobile units. They're, and I like to use the word, I'm going to call them substations, good or bad or indifferent, but they are. They're actually a substation. They have the computer system, they can do everything that you can imagine from that police car today that you can do if you were inside the office. It's fully equipped, ready to go. And so it's a lot of money that we're investing into our public safety, but I think it's well needed. Here into municipal building, you know, we have a building here that is, that is now, since the town has had it since 2002, and we just started, just in the last budget, we allocated some money to replace some carpets. Well, we're not going to replace the carpets in these areas. Now, you can look at them, there's some stains over there, but hasn't been any painting done in these hallways and so forth, but we have to come up with some type of maintenance plan. But our first step is Jimmy, our number-one maintenance man in the town, requested some floor cleaning equipment. And so we allocated $20,000 for some buffing equipment and some carpet chauers, items that we've never really had to be able to do the job to make it look better. So that's something for Jimmy. Our building inspector inspection, we need to acquire another pickup truck, which would be $17,000. In the public works side of the capital budget, I'm going to list all these, we're going to acquire two new five-ton dump trucks, four salt spreaders for the F-250 trucks and the F-350 trucks. We're going to acquire two new F-350 trucks. We're going to acquire a new dump trailer. We're going to acquire a new F-550 dump truck with a plow and a salt spreader. I'm going to get a new chipper. The town, we'd probably violate our code more than anybody, quite frankly, when it comes to picking up tree limbs and clippings, and, but you know something, that's what we have to do. And, and we're going to get a new chipper that's going to be able to chip those branches that we probably shouldn't be picking up those sizes, but it's going to get the job done for, for our residents. We need a towable air compressor. Currently, we have small air compressors that we put inside the backs of our pickup trucks, but it's just not enough air pressure that we need. We needed a bigger unit to be able to get that job, job done quicker and faster for guys that are doing the sewer mains and water main breaks. We're also going to fund a hydraulic metal bending tubing and bender, and this is for general maintenance in the public works department. The parks and rec side, we're going to, we currently have a, I'm not even sure if we even have the old van that we used to have, but it's gone, but we're going to get a new SUV vehicle for parks and rec. We're going to also have to get an automated, automatic external defibrillator. We need additional folding chairs, we need storage carts. Upstairs, if anyone's ever been upstairs, we're going to replace the screen for the activity room. It'll be, I'm assuming, a similar screen to this, and a projector, very similar to what we have here for upstairs. We don't have an oven upstairs, or if, if we did have an oven, it went down.
We have it, it's old.
It's still, okay, we're going to replace that oven. So the total request, as you can see, added up to that amount of money, but that's everything that we're going to attempt to do. I wanted to mention, from the revenue side, some of the things that we didn't speculate, or I didn't want to speculate on, that I did not include. I did not include the solar panel savings. I'm extremely optimistic that this board has agreed and are moving forward to put the solar panel farm in, which annually will save the town $130,000 in electricity costs. We feel extremely comfortable to say that this will be done by December 15th to 31st. If everything was to go well, and there was no problems, then we should start to receive a monthly annual savings of, well, let's, let me just, a semi-year of savings of around $65,000 from January to June 30th. I don't want to include that in the budget because anything can happen with I don't wanna include that in the budget because anything can happen with construction. We also didn't project any possible, which we, the Wawa picked up their permit, I think today was actually the day that they picked up their permit to move forward with the project. There's gonna be a nice addition to the town of Elton, which is gonna help our tax base. We did not include any revenue from that. There's also revenue that has been calculated for with the Urtrich Motorship and the Ramsey Ford, but some of the things that aren't calculated in quite yet is the personal property taxes that's associated with their businesses. So we really can't calculate those things totally to, to give us a fair revenue number. So I didn't include them. I can, my, my thoughts are, once that revenue starts to come in, then we would just do a budget amendment and relieve that from the fund balances that comes in to adjust for that. So I think I have presented my budget without going line by line by line, but I'm sure that I'll have questions from the board per each line, and we will answer them for you here today. But in concept, that's where I'm at, and once again, I, I'm, we will listen to everyone's comments, digest all the comments, and, and I really wanna stress that if three members of the board wanna make a change, I will absolutely make a change. There is no question about that. It's, I wanted to, to add even a step further, I wanna stress that we haven't raised taxes, and we're giving a lot of our surplus. And the thinking, my, my true thinking about this is, is that we have to do something to get the assessments up. We have to create action, we have to create enthusiasm from our workforce, and I can tell you, if the board approves this, and we're not better than we were where we're at today, then the, then it falls onto me. I am the one that has to take the blunt of this, not the board. But I feel extremely comfortable that if we follow these steps, get the right tools in the hands of every department, we're gonna give them everything that they want, and if they perform, the town of Elton will without question be better than what we were today. And that'll be a decision that the taxpayers will be looking at me and saying, yea or nay, you did it or you didn't do it, and be putting the pressure on everyone here to make, make that forward. So that's kind of where I'm at with the nutshell, and I don't know where else to start other than, Mary Jo, do you have any, can I start with you? Any, any questions or collectively?
I know when you received the ring bar this week, and then you sent a quick email out, but seeing what you presented to everyone today, I, it's, I think the first time the budget has been presented to us this way since I've been on the board with these explanations, nothing against the past, but it's, everything's out there, I mean, and what you're trying to do, and...
And I'd like to add to that, that I never did this the first time either. First time I served as mayor, I didn't do it. You know, I, I think that as the town is growing, we've got more people that want us to be more transparent, and we have to be. And I just wanna stress that that's what this is all about.
And I think, you know, I think when we had a presentation at our last meeting, PJ said, like, see it up there, the charts, and, and seeing it right here is just, you have explained everything, what you wanna do, and I honestly do not have any questions at all at this point.
Earl? I know that the, the parts and wreck was lending a truck, or are they still gonna be lending that, even though they, they need the SUV, I know that, because the kids that they...
Well, you've been, you've been the liaison for that. Can you explain to us what the reason behind them wanting that SUV?
Well, there's a lot of the young toddlers that they're taking back and forth from the parks and certain events that they have, and now it's reforming, they, a child seat is, is needed in their vehicle, and the truck really wouldn't provide that for them. I do know that's one reason, because it's easier for them to maneuver back with the SUV.
And all their equipment, I think, they transport from here to the park, especially for summer programs, to put it all in.
My, my question relates back to the truck. I know they still need the truck, but they were using that for the, let's see, which department was that?
Building.
Building.
Yeah, in addition to the winter.
They're, they're gonna own their own vehicle, right?
Yep.
Okay. That was one of the things. And then the comment you, you made, which I highly go along with as far as these buildings, I'm one that believes that if it's not being used, that we're, we're not creating any kind of tax base from unused building, at least give an opportunity to try to come up with another way of getting a business into these buildings if we're not losing anything hollow, at least use it or lose it. That's the way I look at it. So I mean, your ideal coming up, trying to get someone to occupy the vacant buildings is really a good way of bringing back the town of Elton, that's what I would say. So I'm, I'm happy for that. But I appreciate the work that you put together for it.
And I'm, I'm gonna speak for Charlie Givens here this night here right now. But Charlie, I forgot to mention that Charlie is on a mission with the church. I think they're in New York City on a, on a mission here today, and he regrets not being here, but the one thing that Charlie has always had passion for was a scholarship program, and the town of Elton started a scholarship program several years ago, and I increased that from five hundred to a thousand dollars. So we'll be able to make, instead of one person coming out of Elton High School happy with a five hundred dollar gift card, we're gonna make two people happy on their way to attempt to further their career. PJ?
It's not, it's not a budget review that I'm, I'm accustomed to as far as the highlights and the overall framework, but as far as just looking at some of the details, and obviously, you know, I, I would want all of us in agreeance, and I know that's hard for, for any board. And obviously, there's, you had your two other members, and the problems that I'm having with some of this is that I don't believe all of it is investing in the tax, or taking taxpayers' money and investing it properly. I think it's spending money, because there isn't a, a more clear defined plan in place. And, and you're right, when Ms. Minahan and the gentleman from St. Community College, when they, when they put the business plan up here, and I mean, they broke it down, I mean, I voted immediately, absolutely. I, I think it's a, it's a small investment for a huge reward. And in, and some of these things of economic development and this and that, it just, I'm for it. I am not for it the way it stands right now, because there's no plan. There's, and I, you know, so I, the most, you know, I actually envy where Charlie is sitting right now, not here. I really do, because nobody likes to say no. No, I mean, who, who wants to say no to helping and, and donating money and stuff like that? Nobody wants to, but, you know, I know that we all ran on the platform of making those tough decisions when it's a fifty-one, forty-nine decision, and you gotta, you gotta make that tough decision. Seeing forty-one percent, I mean, that, that frighten me. That, that really does. And, and I agree that, I think it's all for a mayor back there, and I've been very critical of, of Mr. Pisana, both sitting here and sitting there and asking questions. And I know some of his stuff is coming back, but how much are we really going to get back out of a hundred, one point eight million? Say, say it's, say it's eight hundred thousand we don't use, it's still a million that we did use, now we're down to whatever it's gonna be, three point two, and then a year later it's gonna be down, because, again, I would like to see all of Elton rising and see a true plan for it. And we also need the, an infrastructure plan in place. I know that's the water fund, that's not the general fund, but this is all taxpayers' money, that we don't have these things in, in place. So, you know, I can go line item and ask tons of questions, and don't agree with this, and, you know, you said this, and now we're doing that, and, you know, but we can get down to weeds with all of this, but I'm gonna say right now, looking at this, it's only a matter of time before we raise taxes or cut services. That, that's it. No, and, and for me, and I know for everybody else, hope is not a strategy. It can't be. You know, there has to be something in place, there has to be a clear defined vision of where we're going, and this is how we're going to tax. And then we can hold each other accountable that these things aren't getting done, whether we are getting done. But just to throw money at it, I'm sorry, I'm not in favor of it. I mean, if you wanna go line item, you can, but obviously going line item isn't going to achieve anything today, because obviously it looks like there's already three votes, no matter the way Charlie wants to go or not.
And I, and I do, I, I feel exactly what you're saying. And when you look at the, the other option would be, and I weighed this, the option would be to not use any of the fund balance and go back to, based on the revenues coming in. And I think that we all realize that that's the optimum goal. The optimum goal is if you got eleven million five hundred thousand dollars coming in, you should only be spending eleven million five hundred thousand dollars going out. I think we all realize that, and I absolutely realize that. And I think that if you look back at my history before, that's exactly what we did. This is, we're in a little bit of a unique seat, because we've already got employees in place, and the only way that we can do that is not buy any capital equipment, and quite frankly, we would have to remove, and I said this in jest the other night, I estimate ten employees, but it would probably be closer to twelve to thirteen employees removing them from their jobs. And I don't see any other way to get down to that number. Now, could we do it over time and not hire any additional folks? I think the, I, I still go back that our assessments are at an all-time low, and are we speculating that they're going up? I absolutely am. I, I, I'm, I'm the optimist when it comes to that side, that I believe that they are going up. But we can't allow them to go down. If, if they go down again next year when they do this reassessment, there's no question. We're gonna have to take the position that we don't have any fund balance, and can we do the services for the town of Elton with ten to twelve less people? And those are decisions that we will be making.
I don't, in, in due time, I really don't think that we actually need to fire, lay off, get rid of any positions. You said about property values going up, going down, you know, of course, I want my property values to go up, and when I actually sell my house, yes, I wanna get as much money for it as possible. But I, I can tell you, I'm not smart enough to know, you know, all the intricate details of property values and this and that in this area and stuff, and that kind of goes to my point, that I wanted all of us, the way I thought it would happen is that we would all sit together and say, hey, you know, I reached out and I, and I talked to this, this particular company that that's their forte, and they project that next year it's going to be. And then I'm like, okay, good, so now we have a revenue coming in, or it's going to go down. Oh, crap, okay, let's, let's, those are the things that I thought that we would actually sit down and, and start getting into and, and, you know, have more time to digest exactly what's going on, because we can't tell, and, and I'm not, I'm not against, I, I actually did a, a thing on the Cecil Wig, actually, and, and put in my name, because I wanted to find something, and I saw the original article I had, because I know that I've been criticized about downtown and stuff like that. I want to, a huge downtown, and I wanted to, I wanted to invest the money with a plan in place. That's what I wanted. So that's why I was really wanting, you know, look, let's, let's just hold the line of where we were last year. We, we as a group, and Louis has said it many times, we can do whatever we wanna do. So if we come to the table three months from now and say, hey, we have such-and-such for an economic director, and we're going to pull this person over here, and we're going to do that, and we're going to do this, and here's the return on investment, X period of time from now, I'll vote yes, just like I did the other day for, for the thing a year from now. Heck, yes. But to do it this way seems, seems like hope, and, and I have a real problem with that.
I'm gonna make one comment, and I'm not gonna add right no more on this.
Sure.
Of the years I've been on this board, always heard the part where you don't wanna touch this, you don't wanna touch that. Investing in equipment, investing in your employees, it, it looks like we're doing something to better ourselves in the future. And when I say that, sitting on a clump of money, not doing anything with it, is, to me, a waste of money. When I say that, taking part of that money and investing into your employees, your equipment to make sure that you're properly using it, the proper, I mean, getting the best use out of it, that to me is worth moving money from one fund to, and, and saying that, okay, we have it for a rainy day. I, I heard that so many times. What is a rainy day? Is it a day that you need it, or is it a day that is really gonna be raining? For me, every day is a rainy day as far as I'm concerned. Use it or lose it, that's the way I look at it. So I mean, if we don't have to sit on so much money and just let it, we'll be getting going by time, we're gonna use it, or we may not be in office to enjoy the, the benefits from it. So what I'm saying is, I'd rather take that little bit of money that we say we have it to hold for another day that we may not ever see, to use it to the benefit of our community, to make it better, to bring our businesses to a point where we can say we can provide some kind of service or help towards you, and maybe in the long term, it'll come back to us. So that's the way I feel about that.
And I do wanna say, a few years back, I don't recall which budget it was, but we were going into the rainy day fund, fund balance, whatever it is, and so I did a study across the line, and most, they suggest you have fifteen percent of your budget in the rainy day fund. We have been over forty percent for the past few years. So we have the money there, and I looked again last night, the night before, there's some towns that have four percent, eleven percent, they're not keeping almost fifty percent of their budget in a rainy day fund. So if you wanna, if it would make you feel better to look up and see, I mean, and I, but I understand what you're saying with plans and everything else, but, you know, there is a, a new excitement in the town that's happening. I see it, I feel it, they love this board, I mean, it's just, there's a new excitement, and people are reacting to that. And I think it has to come from us that we react as well. And I think, you know, we're putting on, we're, we're hiring people, new equipment, you know, of, for instance, public works, we hear good and bad, good and bad. If they don't have the right equipment to work with, they're not going to do a good job. So I, you know...
Don't disagree with, with either one of the statements. Don't disagree with either one of the statements. The problem is, you buy all this equipment, and you still only have X amount of dollars coming in. So again, three years from now, instead of us using 1.8, we had, what, 821, well, we deferred some to water, so 600,000 dollars. So now you're at 1.2 million that were taken from the general fund, maybe other employees, again, we're still at, now we're at 800,000 dollars that were still taken from the general fund. And then the following year is the same thing, or now we need to buy piece of equipment, now, that's my, my problem is eventually, we're doing one of two things, you know. And you know as well as I do, because you only have, there's only so much money coming in. And that's, that's my fear is without the proper procedures in place, you know, and we've talked about that, we're just going to keep on hemorrhaging money, and that's the last thing I want to do. That is, it just cannot be. I mean, we can go through here and we can trim some of the fat and come back to it three months from now, or four months from now, because it makes sense, because now we have our arms wrapped around it and saying, okay, this is the direction that we're going. You know, just throwing that money at it is, doesn't make sense to me. It just doesn't. So, I mean, if you want to go line item, we can, but obviously, I don't think that that's.
Well, as I, I think any line item that you have a comment on, I mean, you can certainly go over them, but if you want to send us all an email and state it out there, there's, we were pretty consistent with the line items, other than the highlighted items that I gave to you. Want to get some other?
I do, I do want to say, there was a few things in here that I, that you.
Any questions you have, lay them on. I think it's good.
I think, again, it's, you know, economic development from day one, and matter of fact, if it was, oh my gosh, your best friend, Dave Wiseman, right? He said the same thing, I'm all about it, I'm all about jobs, I'm all about 10, 20, 100 jobs, is whatever way I'd like to see. And I hope this thing, but again, it's, I'm saying hope because I'd like to say this, this plan will do something, and I just haven't seen anything that's going to make jobs. Onesies and twosies are great, you know, but where are we thinking, willing big stuff and reaching out there? I hope this does it. I just want to see that, I want to see a plan for it. I mean, there's so many different things in here that you held the line and then we went over, but again, it doesn't, as I said last week, unfortunately, fortunately, I have a full-time job.
Did you have anything else highlighted?
I, I quite a few things highlighted, but I haven't had time to sit down and go back on the, when we had the department head things, and they said, hey, this is what that is. So I don't want to be redundant and ask things when I already know what it is. It doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. I can ask at a later date if that's all right.
Yeah, absolutely. You have, we have, the fact is, we have.
We don't have another workshop though, for this.
But when we get to the public hearing time, is your opt, once again, this is, this is, once again, it's a budget proposal.
We have another workshop before the actual voting of it, if you want to bring something up again.
We do.
In June, because we.
June 10th.
We're due some 3rd, and then we have a workshop meeting, and then vote on the 17th.
June 10th is also an additional workshop that we have, not specifically for this, but we know it will be for the budget.
So, no, I'll get my, I'll get all my questions together for June 3rd.
That'd be great. Now initially, I wasn't going to, yeah.
No, but we have a meeting Tuesday, 17th.
Well, that's when we have to adopt.
Listen, this is what it's about, we got to get the questions, so we try to answer them. But listen, initially, I wasn't going to take, I thought we were going to be strapped for time, but if anyone has a question or comment, is Diane here?
I think it sounds like a great budget, and hope is what we have to have. We can't be Debbie Downer's all the time, and we have the enthusiasm in the town, and I think we need to go forward with it. And you have to invest money to make money. You can't just sit on it and not do it. So I think if we invest in our town, if you have no hope for our town, then don't invest in it, but you have to reinvest.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Hare, I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more. I have tons of hope for this town, tons. I, I like, I'm not afraid of spending money on an ROI at all. I'll do it in a heartbeat. It's just, I, I've always, me personally, I like to see a plan in place of the way we're going. That's just the way that I am in business, in my own business. I'm sure you folks, with your successful business, that you guys do the same thing. And my concern is this, that the amount of money that we bring in to the amount of money we're spending is just, it's a huge concern of mine, that once the well going to run dry, and then what do we do at the end?
If this is successful, the money will come.
There's a plan.
Anyone else have any comments today? Mr. Lemon?
I guess I would, a lot of questions. I thought, I've looked through this budget pretty thoroughly, and I'm impressed that a lot of work has gone into it. Did you get the email I sent you?
I did.
Okay. So, I, I think you've spent a lot of time on it, you've thought about a lot of things, you've talked to a lot of people, you put it together, so I think it's an impressive budget. I think, you know, I hear we have to have 15% safety, and so, and it doesn't make any difference if somebody else has 4% or 5%, we should strive for 15%. And then we should be looking, a lot of these items that you have this year are non-recurring, so we should be looking and see how, how we would look next year, a lot of these items we don't have, and so we don't continually attack the reserve that we have, because it appears that the reserve is not going to increase. So, and you all are very much opposed to taxes, increasing taxes, more than I am actually. I think it's important to pay for what you get, but anyway, that's part of it. So I, even though I'm a fiscal type of guy, I was impressed with what I saw, the way it was put together and the thought behind it and everything. I think it's a good, overall, it's a good budget. I may ask, like anybody, have some questions or reservations.
And Mr. Lemon sent me an email, and one of the questions he had, and I should have answered it, we never really talked about the sewer or the, or the water part of the fund, and it kind of takes care of itself, they're proprietary funds, they manage themselves. But one of the questions that came up, the town of Elton currently has, I wish I had my financial statement here, do you have the, you may have the most up, there we go, I'm going to have it here in a second.
Wasn't the interest 130,000 dollars?
Yeah.
And I was not saying, well, I can, we pay.
Yes, Mr. Lemon, do you have the, asked if we could pay it, our interest rate, and believe me, that was one of the questions that came to staff, we have $6 million in our sewer fund, as it is today. Do you have that there, Steve, that I can look at?
We got five before.
Yeah.
Probably from the last meeting.
Yeah, from the last meeting. But we have a little over six, yeah, that's, yeah, we got it, I got it. I just wanted to share, and this was as of May 1st, and I wanted to let everyone also know that we currently have 1,754,567 dollars left over from this year's budget, from fiscal 15. So we're tracking that we have 1,754,000 now.
That's in the sewer fund?
No, 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 this is in the general fund.
In the general?
In our general fund right now, that's what we haven't used to date. Well, and I'm not going to say we haven't paid for something, this is as of the last.
You've got a couple months left.
We have, we have about two months left. Once again, we have to, we have to pay, we're paying for those three police cars, we're paying for a few other, other items. I'm not sure where that's going to fall at, but it's still tracking pretty good, in my opinion anyhow. But I wanted to mention that in the sewer fund, we actually have $7,92,000 in the sewer fund. And what Mr. Lemon had asked, well, maybe we should just take a portion of that money and pay down one of the loans that the town of Elton has with the wastewater treatment plant. And the one in particular I was looking at was, we have two outs, we owe a total of $13,972,000 on our sewer plant at this point. We could take a portion of that, knock out that 1,4 million dollar loan, but when you look at it, we're only paying 1% interest. That was the other side of it. And if we develop our plan for additional infrastructure for the sewer, we may need that. Now, we're not going to be able to borrow that money at 1% anymore. That was the part that came through. We know what the borrowing rate is today, it's right at 3%. That's what B Columbia Bank has told us, that we could borrow as much as we want at 3%. So that was a decision that made not to pay it, only because I was a little worried about whether we could do it. But the fact is, the town of Elton could pay, if we wanted to, 7 million of the 13 million could be paid, and then when you go to the general fund, we owe $1,289,000. Quite frankly, we could take what's left of the, the fund balance and pay that off, town of Elton could be debt-free. We could pay for all the capital equipment that we have this year, also have a fund balance, and not have any debt whatsoever, except what was left from the sewer. I don't think it's a wise move to pay it all off, but we did analyze that. I mean, I sat with Steve, and he gave me the pros and the cons, and, and he knows it better than me, I'm just a tool sales guy, so.
And actually, I'm going to present a question then, to take out of the fund balance this year, one of the, I wish you'd like to, to borrow 30, 50, if I took.
Okay. Currently, as of, as of the last meeting, the town of Elton has almost $6 million in the major facility fund, $5,974,000, we've got $7,92,000 in the sewer fund, and we have $1,926,000 in our water fund. So adding that to that general fund, additional 1,754,000, we're at almost $17 million if we have.
You're not impoverished, are you?
I don't think the town is impoverished, and once again, the goal here, I want to, after 9/11, and I think during those tough recession years, the, the goal, I think, for municipalities was to increase their general fund, where they had how much in reserve?
25%.
25%. Now, I can tell you, the first time I served, I think the most I ever had in the, in the reserve was about $200,000. But we were very fortunate back then that the build, we were building over 100 houses a year when I served the first time. The money was, was coming in, there was a lot of action, the assessments were going up, we didn't have to have a lot of backup. But today, it was probably the right thing to do, to have that kind of backup, and I'm seeing it turning the other way, and I don't think that we need as much, but that's still in my opinion.
The interest rates are going to go up sometime, you're talking about maybe September, maybe later, could be June, but that's not going to happen. I think, I don't think it's going to be substantial for some time, for years. And I, if I had agreed number 13 up there, 96,000, is that over the five-year period?
That's correct.
Okay.
No, it's just like 16.
But wouldn't that be for the?
Over each year, like.
It'd be for 17 also, yeah, for the next five years.
I mean, that's the total for five.
No, 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 at like 16, the one.
In other words, you're borrowing 4 million and paying 96?
No, borrowing 460,000.
The line above it, line 12.
Purchase of capital equipment down to 12.
Instead of striking the check for that much.
That serves on 446, 533, 790, 96, 280 a year for five years.
Maybe I don't understand.
Instead of writing one check for 446, we're dividing it by five.
Okay, so it's press full of interest.
That's correct.
That's my question. Okay, I got it. Anyway, you've gone through it, you've thought about it, I would, I would say that might still be a consideration for some of that money.
I wouldn't rule it out, I want to give it back.
No, 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 no.
I want to lower that water rate again.
If you don't want to raise taxes, sit on it.
Well, very good. Mayor?
Mayor, you know, the money you're talking about, the fund balance and all, yeah, I kind of try to save the money, and you can spend now, but you know, we came to one of the worst recessions we had. Now, I figured if I'd used a lot of that money in those few years, we may not have that much money right now.
That's correct.
So I had to keep a very balanced budget there to keep an eye on the money during that crisis.
Yep.
And that's why we has a lot left over.
Yep.
So I try to be very fruitful with the money and keep it there. So, that way now, you've got some money to spend.
Thank you.
We put a little pressure on him last year as far as the budget.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I do.
No, Mr. Lemon, again.
You going to let me go?
Uh-oh.
You okay? You sure?
Yeah, I had an extra.
How much money are you putting into the downtown sound system? You didn't spell that out.
The downtown sound system is $12,000.
I don't view that as a necessary expense, but it's not as much money as I thought.
I believe it'll be less, a lot less than that, I just wanted to have a budget number.
Well, you got, number page two here, General Administration, you go from, maybe, contracted services, other, the 15, actually, 27,000, budgets, 47.
Yep.
The question was 25, and you upped it back to 45, what's all that for?
I'm trying to look which one, is that the human resources?
No, the administration.
No, it's 31. Here we go. 31.
Let's see, contracted services, 31.
There was an additional, after the initial request, $12,000 or a CUDP was added.
Yeah, we had the, we had the virtual town hall website, we had the IT, which was $20,000, and.
Cured up need at 12.
And we all agreed to re-codify the charter.
And then an additional request for services above and beyond regular IT costs for some equipment that was recommended, $8,500.
But the large portion of that was a re-codification of our charter.
I've heard some discussion. Well, in the, in the planning department, you have master planning, $20,000 a mission.
What line item?
O59.
Okay, O59, let me see here. Planning.
This is something I don't understand to begin with. The prior years was very low, then this year it's 60,000, then we're up to 20,000.
Yeah, the, yeah, the, yeah, the town voted, the town voted on re, doing a redesign guidelines of the historic district, we voted on that a couple months ago, I believe, and this is the funding for that vote that we took, to hire the consultant to come in and, and change the standards of determining what is historic and what's not historic in our town. Is that correct, Gene?
To develop a design guidelines for the downtown historic district, and also to cover costs associated with any type of matching for grants, to implement some of the grants, like the parking lot project that we're going to get ready to work on, or a need-to-engineering for that, so it helps to complement the, any of the grants that we have, to do other planning exercises in town.
What, what in your opinion is the benefit of the historic district?
Well, we were required, I'm going to say by law, to create a historic district going back, I don't know how many, many years ago. But what happens, I'm considered, where I live, in a historic district. If I wanted to change my windows.
That's because you're getting old. I'm surprised you're getting hold.
Maybe that's what it is. I would have to, I would have to go in front of that commission to basically tell them that I'm replacing my windows, and they could, our board could, tell you, hey, you gotta, you gotta date those windows back to-
Well, not, not-
Well, I'm, I'm giving a worse scenario.
We're preserving the cultural history of the town of Elton, and preserving some of the physical aspects of that cultural history with buildings.
Yeah, my wife's from Chester Town, where they have historic areas, I know what's involved in that. Hopefully, even though I'm old, I don't have historic.
For example, the building across the street, they would have knocked that building down, the 1870s former jail, and instead of doing that, they went before the historic district board, they worked with them, and they incorporated that building into the bigger plans for the, for the apartments.
I got it, I understand that, I think. Down on the, page six that I have, this is, this is 050 and 061, community promotion, that goes from $900, budget $1200, that's spent in prior years at 600, 800, whatever, to $18,000.
What line?
Maybe you covered that, or anything.
Neighborhood Youth Panel.
Yeah, give me the, give me the, not-
050, 061.
Yeah, what we did is, we fully funded the, there's a, the Neighborhood Youth Panel for $9,246, we got the Elton Little League, we got the Historical Society, miscellaneous donations, we've got a donation for the Boys and Girls Club budgeted in here also, which probably won't happen because there's, uh-
Then $9,600, the lady was here one-
Yes.
$9,500 in northeast.
Right.
Yes.
I, I emphasized with her, although, just a comment, I thought, I think she should bring in the parents, see if she can rehabilitate them as well as children.
I think that's what we need.
Anyway, okay, so I got that. Let me see, page, page nine on the, this is, I, this is Police Department.
Police Department. I'll get to my Police Department section.
And I think you can explain thousands, a hundred thousand of this, I think, but-
210.
Oh, 099, other capital outlay, $268,000, is part of that body camera?
Uh, let me get to it here, 099, is that under 220, that?
210, and some of the capitals.
Yeah, I was going to have my breakdown here. Was that the vehicles?
It's the vehicles, equipment, body cameras.
Yes, that's, that's correct, it's for six police cars, body cameras, and the equipment to put inside that car.
I thought the police cars were reversed, back to the 15 budget, to pay us something at the last meeting.
We did, we replaced, we replaced three vehicles at the last meeting, of vehicles that were taken out of service during 2015. The whole goal here is, based on the presentation that we had by Lieutenant Waldrich here several months ago, was that we want to try to have our system in place that the oldest police car that the town of Elton would have would be eight years old. And this is part of that cycle. Right now, we currently had 1998, a 99, we had quantity five of a 2001, we had a 2004, 2005. What we're going to be able to do with the three that we just replaced, and adding these additional six, would, the oldest car that we would currently have in the town of Elton would be a 2008.
Okay, and I, I agree with that kind of approach, but then you would be on a yearly cycle, if you had 40 cars there in the police department-
The, the goal would be-
-you'd replace it four every year.
That's, that's correct, it would be a replacement every year. That doesn't mean you can't miss a year, doesn't mean that if the, the board decides, okay, these cars are still running well, let's go on, but you can't have, there's a seven-year, eight-year, nine-year difference in cars that we had. So our total range was not that, let me see, 17 years, 17 years old is our, our range right now.
So that's six vehicles, did, did you say that, is it body cameras is in there?
That is correct.
Okay, because I'm really for that, I like that idea. Okay, so I, I understand that. Let's see, page 22, this is the sewer fund, got to test this out.
Mm-hmm.
Not so good, what's it, you, you have in there, this is item, 025, if I read this right by line item, it says natural gas.
Mm-hmm.
Do I read that right, from 84,000 to 155,000?
That's correct.
And what's behind that?
Uh-
You're going to- The expense for more usage of natural gas there, last couple months, project every 12 month period, be 155, which you see is far more accessible with budget from here.
Use it, use it, they put biosolids, they dry biosolids, it's a big drum down here, so that's what it's used for, not for, for heating, to dry that out, so it can be stored, and to kill pathogens, it's not used for just heating a plant, it's actually used for process.
So we're going to be doing that process more often?
I think the heavier loading, according to-
According to Ken.
This was projections from Ken Benner.
These are our projections, because notice the last three months of the bills were, uh, quite a bit.
Uh, we might want to review that, I'm, I'm, because it could have been, we just were more active during those last three months, or you think it's going to be consistent?
Well, yeah, the four-month plan is going, quite a bit higher than it had to be, yes.
We're trending that based on the last four months, but-
Well, you're going to review it, and you'll let us know.
We will, we will, thank you for bringing that up.
You'll explain that more clearly, so I understand it next time around.
Yep.
How about the next item, item 27, repairs and maintenance, that is from 20,000 to
We had an actual number in 2015 of 20, we're at, we're at like $28,000, $29,000 now on maintenance and repair, and we're projecting, we were $36,000 the year before, $28,000, and then we only budgeted for $20,000 for the repairs, but was there, there was additional work that he wanted to have done down there, what was that additional?
Actually, this is private, private public works, and that was the-
Yeah, the specific projects.
I think the previous years could have been, that you can see we've expended, like you said, 28, 36, that it, last year.
I have a better answer.
Yeah, I'm a big supporter of Ken Benner, I'm not, so I'm not trying to knock anything down, I'm just asking questions.
Yep, it's a very good question, and-
We want to line, we want to line some sewers, we got some, we've, we've done our initial camera work, we've got some sewers which are existing, care, we have to line, and we want to actually line them.
So what that's, what's the additional dollars for?
Correct.
And that would be coming now to sewer fund, not to general fund?
This would be sewer.
Like the-
Which is better?
Yeah, we like that. What else do I need? Talking about the revenue, I'm not, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but you have in there like $15,000 income from parking meters, and in prior years, we brought in like $30,000, $35,000. So why wouldn't we be working on bringing that number up?
Uh, the, 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 we did eliminate, we eliminated some meters, and we still have not hired, in fact, I will say this, Sam, if you could put in there that we're going to put it out, that we're looking for more new applicants for the-
For beat of the-
For that position.
It's on the website.
Excuse me? It is, we went through three applicants, and I think we went through, and they all turned the job down. So we went through the whole process, and we offered each one the job, and, and all three turned the job down. So that's some of the challenges we have, there's work out there, but we had three that turned it down.
Well, that is a challenge, and I've heard this thing on the police department, which is really difficult to get people, I've talked, this is just a sign, I talked to her, my wife was in the hospital in January, I talked to a nurse whose husband, whose, not, whose brother is on the Baltimore Police Force, and I told her what I think the police prefer getting, up here, and they make more than you do in Baltimore City, so maybe we're, maybe we're not recruiting at the right places. And if you were, if you were working in Baltimore City, you'd probably love to work with them.
Mm-hmm.
And so, just an idea.
We had in Baltimore City.
I know, we had PD working there.
Maybe, you know, maybe, maybe we're not recruiting foreign lines, but, the other thing is, and I've said too much already, is, is, as far as cost data, reducing costs, I believe, it's been discussed here, and I believe very strongly, and I've seen it work, is, and DJ, DJ or JD?
DJ.
You're the DJ, you're the local-
I've been called worse.
You're the local DJ. The, I've seen, you know, in the beginning phases of the first couple of years, suggestion systems really work well as far as reducing costs, because the employees see things that nobody else sees. I've seen things that I could walk by something every day of my life, and I never pick up on it, but the guy that's doing the job knows the job, and he, he does it, so I'm in favor of that, that type of thing is, and I'm in favor of employee involvement, I believe that's very important, and every employee has a very important job, and every employee has a lot to contribute, and usually they're more knowledgeable and smarter than you think they are. So, that's a suggestion.
Thank you. Mayor?
That's the first suggestion in.
All right, very good. Mayor?
All right, Mr. Lemon pretty much hit on all my spots, but the one on the same page, the 22, the, you got the maintenance and mains, the budget is $75,000 last year, thus far, I think you guys saw it, only reached $28,000, but jumped up to $100,000.
Uh, you're talking about the sewer?
Right.
And what line item, Jeff?
That's-
045.
045, yep.
22.
Yep, I'm looking for, uh-
That was, uh, a good part of this one, because that told.
That's requested, it was to deal with-
Let me get those expenditures.
He asked, he specified an area, where was that?
Elton Heights, and where was that?
Elton Heights is around the Hudson River area.
Elton Heights and where else is it?
And Hudson River, that's where the majority-
What number were we talking about?
045.
Okay. Uh, I think what, I think what Joe was asking is that we, we only budgeted, we budgeted for $75,000, we only spent $28,000 year-to-date, and why are we budgeting more? Our game plan is to get that job done, and what we don't spend in 2015, of course, doesn't carry over into next year, we'll put it back into the balance, but we are committed to get those curves and gutters done.
Okay.
And more.
Yeah, just one, one, two more here, real quick, for you. The Department of Public Works, I don't know if that was on there or not, but supplies and operating, it was $23,000 last year, and this coming year, you're budgeting up to $80,000.
Uh, what line item, Jeff?
That's line 34.
That's number eight.
Is that?
Number eight, I'm correct.
But then, you don't even figure that out?
Oh, I can see.
Is that where I put the precision?
No.
No, that's, that's your downtown, that's number eight.
$50,000 for the downtown.
That's your number eight, for them there.
So 34 was Christmas decorations, and what else did we put in there?
50, and that leaves really 30 towards normal operating supplies and costs.
So what we ordered out of that $80,000, and you saw that increase, was $50,000 for the, for the, whoops.
Sorry.
Here we go.
And we're at 31 already.
So our normal operating's about 30, but we added another 50 for the purchase of new Christmas decorations.
All right, the last one.
That was line item 34.
This must be something new, animal control, $12,000?
Yeah, actually it is, I'm going to let Louis explain that to you.
The Buddies for Life, that the county contracted, does not have any resources available to the town to address feral and stray cats, so we're going to the SPCA, or the Eastern Shore Animal Rescue League to do that, and there's a fee charge to the town for the disposition of those animals.
The relocation.
Yeah, the relocation of those animals, otherwise we have no resource.
Might as well use the services.
This is for Buddies for Life, is that?
No, we can't use Buddy for Life, we're going to use the Eastern Shore Animal Rescue League, it just needs to say the OSPCA.
The Buddies for Life won't pick up cats, and we-
They won't take care of it.
We, we found a, hopefully we found a solution. Mr. Walter, you had a couple of questions, or a comment?
Yeah, I'm just having one, Tom.
Yes, sir.
It's a sad day when I don't understand why the commissioners aren't in, hold a court with DJ, I just don't understand that. I think he's asking for a simple thing, and I sort of kind of ask the nation, it's two opinions, and everyone's entitled to that, but it's just sad that you guys aren't in a court. The bottom line, is this going to come out in a vote for residents, or will there be an issue on this matter at all? Or we don't have nothing to say, or what's the deal there?
No, actually, on June the 3rd, we have a public hearing where you can come speak in favor or against the budget, and then you'll also have an opportunity, I think, on June 17th, when we adopt it, and there is, don't we have to have two? We only have one. So on June, so on June 3rd, you'll have an opportunity to come speak in favor of the final budget that is put together, and on that date, you can, you can state your opinion, and, and the residents of the town can all come in and speak their opinion, and then at that point, it gives us two weeks to vote on it. This thing can be tweaked, right up to the 99, or the 23rd and a half hour, the budget can be tweaked.
DJ, why would you ask it, what would you ask it for specifically? I kind of think, what were you asking for? You wanted continuance, or what did you want?
Initially, no, what DJ was asking for was, prior to, I think, I'm not speaking for you, but, in, in, in general, he was looking for a longer period to give time for this to digest the budget. And I think, uh-
It's not just, it wasn't just that, it was, it was definitely a longer time to, to take a look at it, line item, and then also a plan.
Okay.
I want a plan.
Okay. Very good. All right, any other comments? Hearing none, this meeting's adjourned.